Board of Education Spotlight.
Okay, so we're very excited this evening to recognize two of our educators in the district. We, last year, began a partnership with Syracuse University. And so first, I'd like to welcome Dr. Lila George from Syracuse. She oversees the Educational Leadership Program at the university. Last year, working with OCM Bosse's for another program, we established a relationship and a partnership to really help provide an opportunity for teacher leaders in our district that were looking to pursue potentially leadership roles and obtain a certificate of advanced study in educational leadership. And so we started a partnership last year, and it's called the Leadership Fellows Program. And I think I highlighted that at one of the board leadership reports last year. But we're excited this year. We have two, our first cohort, Joelle Fiorini from Ray Middle School, and Mindy Howard, a special education teacher at Palmer Elementary School. They're the first two teachers in the district participating in this program. They went through a rigorous process, application through Syracuse. And we're here tonight to recognize them on behalf of the district with a certificate for being members of our first cohort. And also, Dr. George has a little present for them, some swag from Syracuse University. And I think Lila's going to say a few words, and then we'll thank them for their efforts.
Thank you. So Syracuse University is delighted to partner with Baldwinsville Central School District in both teacher preparation and leadership development. That's really how our programs work, really, really well together. This, to me, demonstrates a firm commitment from the district to not only student learning, but adult learning. And that's really impressive and a really important part of continuous improvement in the district. So it's my pleasure to have spent the fall semester with these two inspired and inspiring educators. And I've been waiting, since they've been admitted until now, which was last May, to present them with the swag. This is like the survival kit for adult learners, which is a coffee mug, of course, a journal, and a pen to capture your newest innovative ideas. So again, the university is very grateful and thankful, to Jo especially, but to all of you, for your support of our partnership.
I will add one more thing. We have an informational meeting coming up in February, February 13th. So we're going to be sending out information to district staff to begin the next cohort with an application due in sometime in May. So hopefully, this is a great partnership that will continue for many years and grow future leaders. So congratulations, ladies.
So are we ready to move on to course time and sport activities? Not a lot to report, but a lot in the future. Facilities Committee meeting, architect interviews, district office, Jamie?
Pardon?
Can you report on that?
The meeting in architect interviews?
Yes.
Yeah, that was kind of interesting, I thought. You know, we had some interesting candidates. We had, what, nine firms apply, and we interviewed three. And we ended up deciding to stay with our incumbent, King and King.
I brought two of the brochures that came, our booklets from each of them, if anybody wants to look at them. They're over there with Kim, but pass them around and feel free to take them home or take a look at them while you're here.
Yeah, the quality of their brochures was nice. And then the differential between some of the interviews versus their brochures was a real contrast. Some people did better than others, but that's okay. That's why we go through the exercise, you know, and every five or six years, we should really be doing those things for our professional services and make the, get the vendors to sharpen their pencils and come and show us their stuff. And it was nice.
And I think in the end, it was unanimous that King and King was still a good fit for our district. So that's who we went with, I recommend.
So we will see, I'm sorry, we will see a contract. We're going between the lawyers now, between, with King and King and our agreement. So hopefully, at the next board meeting, you'll see a contract that will bind them going forward. And we really need their help with funding the future, sorry.
No, I just have a question about the process. Because you're recommending, but we've already, we're having, you're recommending, but the lawyers are drawing it up. So I guess I don't understand the process of an RFP, and who actually decides in the, like, how the process is done.
Want me to explain?
Yeah.
Sure.
Like, is this something like we approve as a, we must approve as a board?
No, well, the architects and engineers work for the Board of Education. It's a professional service. So you're not required to go with the lowest price. You're required to have some type of process. So we use a RFP, which is Request for Proposal, where they, they, we give them an outline of kind of what we're looking for. So we had, you know, we're really looking for help going forward in future building projects. It's a little bit different because we didn't have a specific project for them to bid on. So we couch it for, looking more for consulting, engineering, or architects to help the Board of Ed decide the path over the next 12 months for our building project. So what we do is we publish a document, and it's modeled after something that, well, ASBO publishes it, I think, school boards has one, a model that you can use. You fill in some of the blanks of what you're looking for, and then you post it in your newspaper, and you put it online, and you, we sent it to other, to many firms. And we ended up, nine firms from all over the region. So Binghamton, Elmira, Rochester, Syracuse, there's firms from all over central New York applied. And then we, Tiffany and I went through and looked at the quality of the proposals and what the pricing were, and we settled on, you know, three who were representative of a professional level that we were looking for. Somebody who could work for a district of our size and, and type of projects that we do. And then we decided to have them come in and have the Board Facilities Committee interview those people. And spend an evening and spend 30, 45 minutes with each group and cycle them through over about three hours. And then we sat and had a discussion about, what was your impression of each of them at the end of this? And that's how we reach our decision. And then, so, once the Board Facilities Committee makes a recommendation, with the assumption that the board's going to, the rest of the board is saying, okay, you went through the process. And then, we have to have a contract to legally bind both groups. You know, this is what the rates are going to be, and this is what the expectation is, and those kind of things over the next 12 months. And then we'll get into a building project, and we'll use the rates that they propose in the next building project as the fees they will charge. So it's kind of a competitive, but not competitive, process. But price obviously does some of it, and their prices are pretty reasonable compared to some of the, some of the other people.
So will the rest of the board be getting the same information to review that the committee got? I guess, I guess, I'm just confused on the process in the sense that I thought committees make recommendations, and then there's like board discussion about it. I didn't know committees make decisions. That's why I'm confused.
Well, no, the decision would, the, the, my belief would be the board would accept the board, the facility committee's recommendation. We went through the process, we fulfilled our duty as a, as a board to have a subset of the board go through this whole thing. We've discussed this a couple of months ago. We talked about Tiffany and I going through whatever proposals we got and coming up with a subset to bring to the facility committee. And then, let's let these people come in and make their case. And convince us that they're the right ones. Now, what do we have? We had a presentation, but each person, we had a document that they gave us. We can certainly scan and send you all the documents.
So do, like, the process, do they all get, like, the same questions? And then, like, tables filled in?
Yes, we have a-
And then there's comparison? So can you share that with the rest of the board?
Yeah, we can, we can show you the question list that we use.
And the responses to, I guess I'm just confused. Like, I just couldn't imagine coming in and having, like, policy, for example, saying, this is the policy we want. I mean, everyone gets all the information to look through and then ask questions as to why we made the changes that we did. Is this a legal thing? What were your thoughts? I mean, I'm going to be voting on something, and I have, like, no information, like, nothing. I don't even know the firms that we interviewed. So I guess it's just a process thing.
We can certainly be happy to provide the details of all that stuff with you. It was a normal process that every board committee would have, regardless of what your discussion, whether it was, we had the similar kind of discussion you're talking about, because I was at the Policy Committee tonight. The same kind of discussion occurred with the board, when we had those vendors in front of us. And then after they left, we discussed their performance. So the people around the committee had an opportunity to hear the people speak. We discussed it among our group, and then we brought the next person in. And then we stayed in some time afterwards to discuss how all three of them went, and what our feelings were about how they did it. And then the board committee decided to make the recommendation. That's where it is.
So the board made the recommendation, but you've already decided who it's going to be, and I don't even know who the other people, other firms were. I guess I'm just a little upset with the process right now.
Well, that's what a board committee does when you're doing a valuation process. It's no different than if you bid something, and you had six bidders, and you picked the lowest one. We don't show the, we sometimes list the amounts of money for all the other ones, but the low bidder wins. In this particular case, there's more, there's a more subtle way in a decision-making. And I can't speak for the committee itself, but King and King's been here for a long time. We had, some talented people came and talked to us.
Oh, I'm not saying that they're not the right firm. I'm just not comfortable voting without having any information. I, when we present policy, the people around this table can certainly decide that they don't agree with it and not do it, but at least they have the information in front of them to make that decision. I have nothing. That's, that's the only thing I'm questioning, the process. And when are we going to get information? And I am concerned that the decision was made, and there hasn't been a full board discussion about it yet. That's all.
We'll be happy to give you the information that we received from them and send it to you, along with our question sheets. I don't know if I saved all my answers. So, but we'll do that, and we can have a discussion at the next board meeting. Oh, okay. And we can share the evaluations that Tiffany and I went through for every vendor. We have a spreadsheet that we went through to analyze each one. It's a criteria that we use.
So we can put that in the weekly letter?
We can put that in the weekly letter, certainly.
We'll put it in this Friday?
Yep.
So it'll be in the Friday's weekly letter?
So King and King knows that you've made that decision?
Well, King and King knows that they're the firm that was going to be recommended to the board. The board hasn't voted yet.
Do the other firms know that they are not being recommended to the?
That's correct.
So that decision was made without the full board? I guess that's my point.
I think the process is, is that the committee recommended the, which is no different than any other committee. So the board still has the opportunity to vote on it. That's-
So it'd be nice to have the information that you had to be able to make a decision, an educated decision based on the information in front of me. I know nothing.
Are we voting on that tonight?
No.
No.
It'll be in the weekly letter on Friday.
So it'll be in the weekly letter, and you'll have time before next meeting. Yeah. I don't, I don't need these back.
Marching band, and now Cassidy and I, and everybody's watched more than one, but several videos. Jamie, you were there?
I was there, sitting with the families, traveled with the families. I had a thoroughly enjoyable time. Very, I thought the kids did a great job, you know, marching five and a half miles. It was a beautiful day, kind of cold in the morning, but by, you know, by 11 o'clock, it was 60 degrees, typical sunny California weather. It was nice. Thousands of people. So I was glad, my wife and I glad we went.
Yeah, I think it was a memorable day for the whole district.
I think the kids and the families had a really nice time.
Health Insurance Committee meeting was, will be rescheduled to another time. Denise, we were all there, and timelines got a little messed up with the consultants. So it'll be another day, another time. Policy Committee meeting. So Jim wasn't there, either. Do you want to report, John?
Well, we went through several policies. So some, we're going to, well, we still have to review. They'll email us to make sure before they send them to the board. But a lot of them are still in, like, the first stage for us. We have more discussion to go on several of them.
So the Policy Committee will see all of the adjustments or changes that we discussed for review before taking to the board at a future meeting?
Yep.
So they're still in draft. But we made progress with quite a few. There was a lot on the agenda today. There's still four outstanding.
Yep.
And they'll be moved to the next meeting in February?
Yeah, and you may want to consider adding another policy committee, because there's a bunch at the bottom that aren't scheduled, that we're not going to get to. And that's part of our goals for the year, is to finish the policy review.
Yeah, we may-
Because last year, we had, like, we had about two a month, and those were the easy ones. You know, I do remember Eric saying, once we get to the 7,000, 8,000 series, there are more local discretion, and there's probably going to be more conversation. But we have less meetings scheduled this year. And I'm not certain if we're going to get through, because there's a whole bunch at the bottom of that cover sheet that aren't scheduled to be discussed at all at any of the currently scheduled meetings.
Yeah, well, unless we had some meetings, which I think we don't, we didn't put that many meetings in this year as it was. So I think that is a possibility, so. Okay. And then we see upcoming here. So next in line, we have the Student Board Report.
All right, so everybody's just getting back from the holidays. But we came back to a hats-off video by the administrative team. So a big issue was that kids were wearing their hoods up and wearing hats and having earbuds in during class, and it kept them from the instruction. And it also made it difficult to make a connection with the students. So the administrative team took a comedic approach and made a video acting out scenarios to try and get kids to take their hoods down, be more personable, and try to pay attention. And this approach has not been done before or recently, and it was well-received. According to administration, it's night and day for them. And I've noticed a lot more kids walking with their head up rather than hiding in a hood. So that was really nice. In December, we had the Positivity Project's 12-day of holiday cheer. So the 12 days before we left for break, we celebrated the holidays and tried to spread positivity. This stemmed from writing messages in the library, to showing movies during lunch periods, and then freezing our hands and butts off outside of the school welcoming kids. But the Positivity Project is new to the school, and this was just a great example of how much fun it can be for everybody. And it's been doing really well this year. The lunchroom construction is done. I'm sure many of you have seen it, but the kids absolutely love it. I mean, I've seen what it looked before and what it looks like now. And it's so clean, it's gorgeous, and kids are really excited. We're all very excited for the kitchen to be done, so our regular meal schedule can be back on track. But it's looking beautiful, and kids really do enjoy it. The rose parade was really well-received. Our arts department had a great month. Scholastic Art Awards just came out, and we have 55 awards for students from gold, silver keys, and honorable mentions. So everybody's stoked. The art department has been doing really well. Additionally, upcoming, Positivity has, Positivity Project is going to be working on a video, hopefully with younger kids, to show students and staff the importance of character traits when you're young and when you're older, and how you should always work on being a better person. Additionally, they're going to try and implement Positivity Project through sophomore orientation. So a group is going to be working on that as well. Additionally, as we worked with Palmer, we're now going to focus on working with McNamara. We wanted to give some time between working with each schools with, having a presentation, but McNamara is now on the agenda, and it's coming up quick. And next Friday, we have our Wellness Day. Our, I think it's our, it's our only Wellness Day. It's on next Friday, and kids always love Wellness Day. It's a good time to practice new skills. They're welcoming in new people. I think there's Mia Zumba instructor. And also, we're having our first winter pep rally to focus on winter sports. Our pep rally in the past has only been in the fall to celebrate football. But now, we're going to be looking at all sorts of sports and also unified sports to help get everybody included. So we're all very excited, and there's a lot coming up. But we're going to have fun, so.
Thank you, Jordan. That's a really great report. Really is nice. Makes, makes us feel like we're there. Just, it's, it's very updated, and it gives us a lot of really good information. Thank you very much.
Jamie, is it going to be possible for us sometime to get a tour of the cafeteria?
Sure, we can make that arrangement.
Yeah, I saw the Twitter of the video online with Brian right the day it opened up. And I can't even visualize, like, what it looks like.
It's awesome to see the students in there. That's what we built it for. I can't wait for the kitchen and the coffee shop to get done, so. That's not done yet. We kind of rolled out, they're still cooking the food in other buildings. And they're bringing it in. We're just trying to bring the lines up piece by piece before they, there's some training and other setup and all. They just, they haven't, they're supposed to hook up the cooler and freezer this week, and then he's got to get food in there, sanitize it, go through the inspections. So hopefully, by the end of this month, the last week in January, we should be up and rolling with everything.
The whole?
The whole thing. That's the plan.
I'd rather wait until the whole thing is done, the coffee shop and everything, to see what it looks like. I thought it was all done.
No, it's not. We're just nibbling away. It's that, you know, it's that last three or 4% of a job. It drives you crazy, like, the window's not in, and we're just waiting for materials.
There's cafeteria and transportation center soon as well.
Right. Transportation, we're planning occupying President's Week, the 18th of February. We'll start moving. We want to be able to, the Monday after President's Week, to start moving children. But we got to have everybody move at once. A phone line was installed, was wired today, so we're hoping they punch it down. And that's what's been holding us up for our certificate of occupancy. We need the phone lines for the life safety stuff. But I'm psyched. It's getting to the end. I love it when a building project ends. It's been a long time coming. That's right, was planning my next one, that's right.
Okay, moving on, request to speak, Jamie?
There are no requests to speak.
Works for me. Consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attach. Do I have a motion? Matt, was that you too, John? Jeff's second. Any questions on the consent agenda?
No, I just want to make a point. We have the attendees listed twice in the last Board of Ed meeting, so we're going to have to make sure we don't get the minutes lost and they're up for the next meeting to be approved. I just caught that this afternoon.
Okay. Got that, Jamie? Alless in favor? Opposed? Carried 6-0? Leadership Report.
So we're very excited this evening to have Colleen Vigiano from OCM Bosse's with the Annual Service Visit.
Good evening, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I'm Colleen Vigiano, the Deputy Superintendent at OCM Bosse's. And we really do appreciate our partnership with you as a district. At each of your spots, you do have our Services Visit snapshot, as well as two other documents that I'll refer to about some of our latest career and technical education programs that we're offering. But first of all, I do just really want to thank you. You've been a wonderful partner with us, and we feel like our students, collective students, benefit greatly from, from the programs that we provide together. And your leadership team here provides great input for us into the programs that we offer. Jo sits on a couple different advisory committees for OCM Bosse's that helps us ensure that we're providing the professional development that is meaningful for your teachers. And you also provide input as far as which CTE programs we want to be offering, as well as helping us figure out how best to support students with disabilities, and many of which are placed right here in the Baldwinsville School District, side by side with their typical peers. So just to let you know what you have in front of you with the snapshot, on the front page, these are all Baldwinsville students. So you can see the, some of the faces of, hopefully, your neighbors and people in the community. And the numbers on this sheet really just kind of show what it is that you spend and what it is that you receive back in aid through your Bosse's services. And so, like, I'll point out to you, through cooperative purchasing alone in 2018-19, you saved an estimated $252,000. And so, we're talking about purchasing things like basketballs together and hot dog buns and things like that, that you need to purchase anyway. But it's obviously much more cost-effective when you do it collectively with districts across the region. And so those are savings that we see as going back to you to put into programs and things for your students. And so when you look at your Bosse's service requests, it turns out to be about 8% of your current year budget when you're thinking about the expenditures that you make. And just the Bosse's aid that you generated for the 19-20 school year is over $3 million. And so hopefully, you find value for the services that we provide. We always say that our goal is that you want to use our services regardless of the aid. That's what we shoot for, which is a quality of service that you would want to partner, because it's more cost-effective and a higher-quality service when we partner. And your portion of the Bosse's administrative budget is $223,000 as well. So just something for you to be aware of, is that something that you do vote on? So if you open up this snapshot, you will see, really at a glance, the different services that you participate in as a district. So I will start on the left-hand side of the, actually, yeah, you can, you have the whole thing up here as well. So on the left-hand side of the snapshot, you'll see a piece on career and technical education. We had, in 2019, about 440 seniors graduate with CTE endorsements on their high school diplomas. And I don't know how familiar all of you are with what a CTE endorsement is. But basically, we consider the CT endorsement as value-added on the high school diploma. So for students who participate in the two years of CTE programs, pass an industry-based test, which is comparable of like a Regents exams in a, in a core class in the district, and also do a project and a performance assessment, which means they actually are evaluated on their skills based on an evaluation of someone in the, in the respective business area they're studying. So for construction technology, for example, an outside contractor comes in and evaluates how our students do and the various skills that we're working on. So those students earn the CTE endorsement on their high school diploma, and that seal is recognized by many of the industries that they will go off to the world of work in. And so that is something that will help them become more employable. And so here, you'll see many of the students who have graduated with CTE endorsements on their high school diplomas. We're really excited. You'll see these two handouts that we, that I've also shared with you. One of the things that we focused on a lot in recent years is trying to create embedded, embedded career and technical education programs actually in businesses. So we, I think, we're very proud of the work we do at our Bosse's Centers, where students come to the Bosse's Centers and learn a skill. But what better scenario can you have than a student actually being in a business, learning side-by-side a professional in their field? And so currently, you have two students involved. This program, the New Vision Engineering Professions Program, we launched just this past September, and it has been very well-received. You have two students participating. They go for a half a day, their senior year, and take learned instruction from a Bosse's teacher, who used to be a Lockheed Martin employee and also used to be an SU college professor. And, and then, part of their week, they go out and work side-by-side engineers at Lockheed Martin. These students have received security clearances. They are doing amazing work, side-by-side engineers at Lockheed Martin. And we actually, at our board presentation this Thursday night, have some of those students coming to speak to our board, because they are just absolutely thrilled about the opportunity. And so those are the things that we're trying to do with our local employers to help address the employee needs, the employer needs. You may have seen Lockheed Martin had a job fair at Destiny last week, and they were hiring for 120 jobs. And so what they're trying to do is build a pipeline through collaboration with us as a Bosse's to get students interested in engineering as seniors in high school. They will go off to college in engineering. Lockheed Martin will give them jobs in the summer to keep them connected to central New York with the hope that eventually they'll come back. Lockheed Martin will give them jobs in the summer to keep them connected to Central New York with the hope that eventually they'll come back and work in the area. So those are some of the innovative things that we're doing in partnership with you. And that takes a lot on the part of the district to make that happen as well. They have to figure out transportation for students. They have to rearrange schedules. But one of the things I appreciate about Baldwinsville is that you're willing to do that if it benefits students. And so you should be very proud of that and we're certainly very appreciative of that. I'll also point out to you that this other brochure, this is a new program that we're launching this coming September. It's Heavy Equipment Repair Operation and Diesel Technology Program. And it's going to be located at Tracy Road, which is in East Syracuse. And they have over $40 million worth of construction equipment and trucks onsite. As a Bosse's, we can't afford to have $40 million of equipment at a Bosse's Center and we can't pass that cost on to you as districts to purchase that equipment. So what better way than to partner with a business to have our collective students have the opportunity to learn about diesel technology, heavy equipment? And when you look at the job projections of this area, they're very high. And so we'll be launching this in September. And so just wanted to give you a few examples of some of the innovative programming that we're working on together with you. Below the career and technical education section, I'll point out to you the special education, the number of classrooms in school district buildings that are host, that you guys are hosting special ed programs in your districts. And we have three classrooms here in Baldwinsville and we really appreciate the partnership we have. We want to provide the full continuum of services for students so that whenever possible, students can stay in district. But we also know at certain points in time, you need to have higher levels of programs. And so we do have that continuum. But thanks to districts like you, we've been able to increase the number of classrooms that we have in component school districts. So in 2011-12, we only had 15 classrooms in component school districts for special education and now we have 35. And you're absolutely an important part of that, so we thank you for that. On the left-hand side, the column, you'll see the services highlighted in blue that you participate in for instructional support services. Whether it be, I think one of the big pieces that people benefit from regionally are the leadership networks. So opportunities for your teachers to come together with teachers from across the region. And our Bosse's staff facilitate those conversations. So as you're looking at rolling out new learning standards and thinking about curriculum and instructional best practices, they have the opportunity to talk to folks from across the region. And we've gotten wonderful feedback from that and that's something that you actively participate in. On the right-hand side of the snapshot, you'll see it at the upper section shows you the 2019-20 Business and Management Services participation. And what we do in this chart is show you what everyone in the Bosse's is participating in because sometimes it's helpful to see, oh, well, what are others participating in? And what might we consider participating in? I can tell you Baldwinsville does an excellent job. Jamie is all over making sure that we maximize Bosse's aid by partnering when it makes sense. And so it's very obvious when you look at this chart that Jamie's done a great job over the years of taking advantages of those services. Below that, you'll see Sierra. Sierra is just one student. We like to feature one student in our snapshot who's taking advantage and being successful in one of our programs. And so I don't know if she's a neighbor of yours or you happen to know her or not, but she came in and wanted to enroll in our Health Occupations Program, thought for sure that's what she wanted, but then in the process walked by our lab technician program and got really captivated by what she saw there, centrifuges and eyedroppers and white coats. And so has entered into that program, has done very, very well, loves working in the lab. We started the first lab technician program in New York State and it is flourishing. So when you look at job projections, the jobs are there. And you can also, in many cases, work for a lab and a lab will pay for your ongoing education. And so we have many students who've taken advantage of that and Sierra is one of them. Also, at the bottom, you see a little "Did you know?" And I just wanted to say, I think it's wonderful that Baldwinsville's participating in restorative practices training. It's something that you are on the forefront of. A few districts are doing it. We're doing it at OCM Bosse's, but it really is a wonderful way to build community in your classrooms. And you will see and feel the difference when your teachers are trained. Our teachers love it. Our students really like it as well. And it's a great way to be able to problem-solve issues in the classroom, as well as just kind of share good news, share what's challenging and work through issues. And so I was really glad to hear that Baldwinsville is taking advantage of that. On the back of your brochure, your snapshot, you'll see the Regional Information Services that you participated, highlighted in blue as well. And you are, you know, you certainly participate in many of the services offered through the Regional Information Center, which is also a great way of, as you're thinking about, as you're working on technology projects, it's a great way to generate Bosse's aid and help with cost as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but I would say to you that we are really grateful for our partnership with Baldwinsville. We feel like you keep students in the center of your decision-making. That's our experience. And we have the opportunity to work with 23 districts, so we have quite a bit of experience in that department. And just want to thank you for the collaborative relationship and also special thanks to the leadership for working so collaboratively with us and giving us good feedback so that we're constantly looking at how to improve.
I just have a comment. I have the luxury of sitting down the hall from the New Vision Technology Office, so I've stopped in there a few times and talked to Mr. Povinelli.
Oh, my gosh, wonderful.
And the things that they're doing in there is really impressive to see. So I've mentioned to him about having the students come in and talk to us at some point. So hopefully we can get that scheduled so that the rest of the board can see, interact with them. But it's actually really difficult to tell the difference between the high school students and some of the, you know, young interns from college because they're pretty much engaged in the same work while they're there. So it seems to be going very well in there.
That's wonderful to hear from your perspective. Thank you. And I can speak and certainly if you're interested, the board's interested, we can follow up and certainly have some students here.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Is there a limit on the number of Baldwinville students who can go into that Lockheed Martin program? Because I remember when Jody unveiled that back like last December and the program sounded amazing. How many students can that program take?
So that will be a collaborative decision with Lockheed Martin, obviously, because we want to make sure that we're not overtaxing the company. Right now, we have 16 students enrolled in the program. I don't see us getting larger than 30 and that would be 15 students in the AM and 15 students in the PM. But we're going to monitor that closely. We're having ongoing conversations with Lockheed since this is our first year. We want to make sure that we don't grow it too quickly and we don't become a burden to Lockheed. But I think right now it's going very well. I would say we wouldn't see it going to more than 15 in each section.
There are no other questions. I would just say that, you know, on behalf of the district too, we do appreciate your leadership and the leadership of others at OCM Bosse's. We're appreciative of the partnership and thankful for that every day.
Thank you very much.
We're onto budget.
So Dana's here for the review of the transportation budget and school bus purchases.
I think the first question at this point would be, Jamie, are there any changes from last time?
In this particular budget, no.
Okay.
We're still working on salaries and a couple of other things, but no.
Okay. Now, questions? Anybody have questions for Dana? You lucked out this week.
Turn it off. Thank you. Have a good night, Dana.
Well, it could, yeah, we could. We could open it for questions from the public. I don't know if there are any. I guess not. Okay, have a good evening, Dana.
Thank you.
Now, Jamie, debt service. Any changes on debt service?
Yes, there is a change in debt service. We had a meeting of the Executive Committee of Workers' Comp just before the holidays and it, Workers' Comp, we had originally estimated it for next year at 531-698 and it's going to go to 566-827, or an increase of $35,125.
An increase?
An increase.
That's a bad word.
That's still lower than we're paying this year. It's just it's higher than our estimate that was in our presentation. So that number is going to change.
Okay, next time bring good news, okay?
All right. You know, at this point, I don't know if there are any good news. We'll just have to keep plugging until the governor's budget comes out.
That's supposed to be next week, is it?
Yeah, it's this week, I think.
What's the date on that?
It's usually done, what, like the 15th or 17th, one of the two. I think we'll see it by before Friday.
Yeah, and I know a lot of people have been trying to get like a specific date after he did his State of the State address and it was hard for people to nail him down. That's what it was, but...
It's going to be interesting to see how he can do all the stuff he's talked about doing and still has a $6 billion deficit. I don't know how that works, but, hey, we'll just wait and see what is in store for us, that's all.
Yeah, well, at least it's not the multi-trillion dollar deficit the federal government has.
Right.
Quick question for you. I think last year you kept kind of a running tally for us, a report that you gave us every board meeting or after the budget presentations, just to say what the changes were.
That's the only change we've had so far.
Okay.
Yeah. We can start doing that.
Perfect, thank you.
So next is the proposed athletic budget.
We have Chris Campita here for that.
We'll go over the salary part here. We'll just kind of go over the phases of my budget. And again, if there's any questions, please let me know. This part here is more or less a contractual increase that we've put in. We are looking to increase our after-school activities for our supervision. That's the fifth and sixth item that you see right there for that piece. And it's more or less our ticket takers, our security for games with that. The next piece that we have is the equipment. I've spoke probably the last several years about fixing, not fixing, but updating the equipment at Ray. Dirgy, we finished last year and we're going to be on phase one of two this year. So the original Baker High School gym, not gym, but weight room that we have, we still have the original equipment that has been there since the early 2000s. So we're going to do that in two phases. We'll do the first phase this year and then the next phase would be next year so that all of our weight rooms across the board, Dirgy, Baker, and Ray will be up to date. The other piece underneath that for the equipment for athletics, we're looking to replace about a 12- to 15-year-old mat, wrestling mat from EasyFlex. So that's one of the shifts there. It's not that it's going up too much, but just so that you can see that, that's one of the items that we have for that piece. Our contractual is more or less the official fees. Our bowling for Unified Sports, we started a couple of years ago. We had to increase the games for that with our boys and girls bowling. Project Adventure is in the contractual. That's where we're going to train 14 of our PE teachers, elementary, Dirgy, Ray, and Baker to do the Project Adventure that we have in the high school and over at the stadium. So we're going to do that over the summer. We'll have trained PE teachers to bring the kids out there to help assist. There was a little bit of a lag with that. Tom Ross was one of our PE teachers that did that every single year. But you have to make sure that our PE teachers are trained, so they're going to come over in the summer. We'll have that trained. I do know our assistant principal, Bill Allen, is going to be in this as well. He's pretty excited about that. So that was one of the pieces. And then our materials and supplies, if you look, these are for our PE department, for all of the schools that we have here. They get a allotted amount of money for their supplies to kind of keep up with, you know, what they need to. We put those orders in each year. The only big shift here is really the materials and supplies. Football is looking to get new uniforms. It's 120 uniforms, it's tops, bottoms. We have established a couple quotes with a couple vendors, but it is, it's one of those pieces that is, you know, pricey supply to get. So that obviously is where the shift is. After this year, I'm not looking to continue to keep it at 120. I would obviously drop that down based off of the needs for our fall, winter, and spring, our coaches. And that would be, that's really one of the big ticket items that we have there.
Chris, can you just go back and talk about the locker rooms again? Just repeat what you said.
The locker rooms?
Yeah.
Did I say locker rooms?
The weight rooms.
Oh, weight room, I'm sorry. So, I probably, Joe, I don't know, I don't remember. I know that they had several years ago, years ago, they had, I want to say, it was with the other athletic director, Mr. Quimby. They had put in this weight room and the equipment that has been in there, I mean, it's over almost 20 years old. So what we've done the last several years is try to update the gyms at Ray, Dirgy, and Baker somewhat realistically, not taking a huge chunk out, but just chipping away at making sure that we update those rooms. And Ray has done, Dirgy, we just, we filled their weight room with equipment this last summer, so they're up to date. And this would be phase one of two if that was to work. So half of the equipment, if you will, would be up to date in the Baker High School the summer and then we'd do the other part next year so that...
We decided to try to do it in stages so it wouldn't have a huge chunk every, you know, and then if everything ages out at the same time, it'll all break up once again. So now if you have a few years separation in it, you get a little bit more break. So future boards at aren't going to have to do it all at one.
Yeah.
Is that a pretty good utilization rate on the, on the weight rooms in the high school? You see that used a lot?
Oh, absolutely. And that thing is, that's flooded. We've got three coaches, fall, winter, and spring. It's also used in the summer where it is flooded with student athletes, students who use the weight room. And it is, it's used by our athletes.
I would say if you walk down that hall, you'll know it's well utilized.
It is, it's really nice.
It's almost, you're outgrowing it. So Jamie, we'll have to put that in the funding, the future.
We had a nice conversation with the PE and athletic people last week about what they would like to see in future building projects and, you know, locker rooms, expanded weight rooms, you know, new gym. Those things are all on that list and that was actually a pretty good conversation for an hour and a half.
Correct.
They were enthusiastic and realistic. I thought what they came up with was reasonable and something we could use to do our planning. We're having another meeting this Thursday with the fine arts people, so music and arts, we'll have a seance with them on Thursday in a large group room at Baker. Again, we're just trying to do some outreach before we get into the facility committee meeting and go in. We want to have more information. You know, what's the staff think? What do they want?
And the treadmills, the bikes, the ellipticals, those are all relatively new. So now we're just kind of doing the free weights and looking at some of the machines that we have, just to upgrade.
And what about the condition of the locker rooms?
Well, that's another thing. The locker room, you know, facilities in almost all of our buildings are terrible. So we know that we have some work to do there. You know, the high school, boys and girls, men's and women's, they're awful.
Jordan, did you want to speak to the girls' locker room? It makes me laugh because in cross-country, both of the locks on the bathroom doors didn't work, so we would always have to hold it for each other. And the locks didn't get fixed until the girls started posting notes on the doors until somebody noticed and fixed it. So like little improvements like that have helped significantly, but they're definitely very outdated. I mean, but you make it work, so.
We have painted and things like that, but you can't get past the fact that they're, you know, 40 or 50 years... they're, you know, 40 or 50 years old. You know, and the science classrooms above the locker rooms in the high school are, are the similar vintage, so there, there's definitely things on our list. Instructionally, there's work to do, just like there is athletically.
Any other question for Chris?
Yes? Right to the detail, Joe, for the administrative budget for next year. Might as well just start with salaries. So 1240 is the superintendent's office, 1310 is my office, 1430, we have the difference between, that's going to be a Dave versus Eric, those two codes, side by side. The one column I bring your attention to, the current budget of 301 for the district-wide certified for, for my office includes Tiffany and I both, and then the 338 in the last column, that's probably the highest, that's for, assuming I'm only, I'm going to be leaving in the end of January of '21, so that's part of my salary, and then it also includes the person that's going to come and take Tiffany's role over for purchasing and those kind of things, to be a budget and purchasing person in the office, what, what Tiffany's really been doing for, for me since she's been there. But if she takes more of the reins, we'd like that person to start working, you know, July 1st, so that we can have six months with Tiffany and I both there with that person, and that's the cost of doing that. That's why you see a big jump in the salaries, that's one of the reasons. Want to go to, pardon, equipment? Equipment's the same, we leave it at 5,000 every year, that, that's the money I use to buy computers and whatnot and the whole building, office furniture, those kind of things. Contractual, what's the, the big jump here was our legal fees. If you look, so we're going from 51 to 104. We're actually going to be putting more money in there this year to cover that with, with Eric's departure, and we're running a 110 million dollar business. For some reason, the first six months of the year, we've been pounding the legal bills, well, because we're a target, you know, but that's everything, that's contracts, that's contracts, that's issues with children, you know, special ed, employee law, all those kind of things. That's probably the prime driver under contractual. Everything else kind of pretty much stayed the same. Materials and supplies, it's almost the same as it was the prior year. I increased Sarah's budget a little bit, so she'd have a few, a little bit more money to spend when she's doing her PR stuff. And BOCs, we do buy a lot of stuff for BOCs, a lot of it's our software, you know, we, BOCs, administrative rent and capital projects for BOCs is all built in, see the last three codes on the bottom, that 250, that half a million dollars, 590. But computer services, all those kind of things are in, and application service, those kinds of thing, substitute calling, so the HR office and things like that are all built into this, so this is the district-wide expense of running the district, basically. Principals and those kind of things are all tied into instruction, in the instructional budget. Are there any questions? Just so everybody knows, that we're going to, we build these in layers, and as we go along, we, if you go in the, the front part of it, like the sheet, Joe, right there, see? So we still have one, two, three, four blanks. So right now, we have four filled in, we got four to go. So each board meeting, you'll see another blank or two filled in there. So technology, special ed, instruction, and facilities, those will all, in the next few weeks, get filled in. And then, once we get to the bottom line, we'll, we'll be working with that as we go along, and in addition, we're really waiting for the, the governor's budget to come out, that's going to be the driver. But we need to see where everybody's wishes are, and then we'll see how wishes match up with reality, like we do every year.
Jamie, can you just remind me again? So we look at salaries for, in athletics and admin everywhere, but all of the employee benefits fall into the undistributed?
They're into 9,000 codes, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
So when I did that presentation a week ago, you know, the last board meeting for benefits, and, and that number's going to change, because we, we're going to find out our last, we're going to have a meeting this week with Health Insurance Consortium, we should find our last percentage. That one I used to go in here was probably 90 days old, and now we're going to have six months worth of data, so all the business officials get together in a room, and we look at that with Steve Lozzi and try to figure out what might the rate be next year? Is it seven? Is it eight? 1% is what, 180,000?
Right.
Right, so that's material when we look about, and then as we go along, we'll get more definition from the state for retirement and all those kind of things. They'll start fixing those totals for us.
So in the, in the current proposal, what did you use for health insurance?
I think we have 8% in there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
But that's not a definite?
That's not a definite, yeah, because we haven't had that. They told us to use that as an initial budget number...
Okay.
When we met in September. So now, we're just, okay, everybody's thinking about this, let's, and they usually have two meetings, one in the fall and one in January, to tell us what it's going to be.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Again, we'll start producing that change sheet for you, because you are going to start seeing more changes as we work through FDE, so the salaries are based on all the people who are working for us right now. That's my version of zero-based budgeting. Start, start with the bodies, because we're a service business, and when your payroll's over 50 million, that really is where the change is. Thank you.
So next, we have textbook adoption request. This is for Latin, first reading. This will be on our next board meeting for approval. As you know, our goal has been to, with the hiring of a certified Latin teacher, to ultimately begin with Level 1 again. So this year, students entering eighth grade will have that option, as well as the potential for there to be an elective option for Level 1 for any student at the high school that has not taken Latin before. So we're looking to purchase these texts over the course of this budget cycle for implementation in the fall. Second G there was the trip request, first reading. That is for Camp Tallulah, an annual trip that began, started in Van Buren and, and now is at Palmer Elementary School for Grade 5. And this trip will take place June 23rd and 24th. So we're looking for final approval at our next meeting.
Hey, Joe, can you just go back for a second? For Latin, and not related to the book, but students in Baker will have an opportunity to take that, if they're interested. Is that going to be offered at Baker?
It would, because the teacher actually that currently teaches Latin would be split between Baker and Dirgy.
Okay.
Resolved that the Board of Education approve the textbook adoption request to be used by Dirgy Junior High School students in English 9, English 9, 15-1 pursuant to the attached drive of motion. Jeff, Matt? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 6-0. Resolved that the Board of Education approve the boys varsity baseball team to travel and participate in the high school baseball spring training at the ESPN Wide World of Sports Complex in Disney Orlando, Florida, April 2nd to 9th, 2020 pursuant to the attached drive of motion. Kim? Second? Jeff? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 6-0. Resolved that the Board of Education approve the Baker High School Orchestra and Band students to travel and participate in the senior high area all-state music festival at Ithaca College at Ithaca, New York, January 31st to February 1st, 2020 pursuant to the attached drive of motion. Jeff? Kim? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 6-0. Resolved that the Board of Education approve the proposed DCA account name changes for Baker High School and Ray Middle School pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Have you, Matt? Kim? Any questions? Okay, everybody's saying, okay, all, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried 6-0. Enter municipal agreement for the Baldensville Central School District and the Town of Lysander. Jamie, do you want to go, well, I need a motion and a second, first, and then go over this, please? Jeff? Kim?
Okay, this is identical to the contract we have with the village, with the exception of the names being changed, because I just sent them a word copy of the document. So the board, their board, two weeks ago, voted to do this and approved it, and now it's our turn to approve it. So what they're going to start doing is their highway department's going to start buying fuel from our fuel facility at our new transportation center, kind of an extension to what we've been doing with both the Village of Baldensville and the various Baldensville fire companies who've been buying fuel from us. So that's, as far as I know, that's going to continue. So this is just another step of us doing more work together, because we both have the same set of taxpayers. I will tell you, in the next few weeks, we're going to be taking the two town boards and the village board through the new transportation center, because they're interested in us doing some of their fleet management, some probably more than others, but now it's got to the point where some councilman and the, and the town supervisor would like to come through, so we're, I'll pick some dates, and I'll inform the board when that's going to occur. And hopefully, we can have Sarah there to take some pictures and show us about doing some inter-ministerial cooperation, and, and, again, we still have the same set of taxpayers. If we could repair their buses cheaper than they can when sending them outside, then, you know, we're not interested in making a profit, we just want to pay for some overhead. We could generate 30 or $40,000 a year above a person's salary, we could live in the building for free, except for the debt service. That's, that would pay for our heat and lights and utilities, our utilities rather, and our insurance, so we'll see.
This is already approved by the town board?
Yes. It's already been signed by them.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried 6-0. Board Roundtable? Anybody have anything for Board Roundtable?
I just, I just wanted to add, I, I saw the videos, I saw the hood video, but also the, the video update today, and, and really thought that, I saw the last one, I mean, that's just, it's really refreshing seeing, seeing it presented in that way, as opposed to a newsletter. It's, it's really good, so kudos to the folks at Baker for, for getting that out.
Yeah. Oh, in that, I guess we will be, resolved that the Board of Education enter the executive session to discuss student appeal and employment of particular individuals. Do I have a motion? Matt? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 6-0. I'm doing Zach.